For February 12th, 2018, if you would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Monica Duran.
Here.
Zachary Urban.
Present.
Denise Hoppy.
Present.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
Tim Fitzgerald.
Here.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Pond has excused himself for this evening, and we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Counselors, before you have the -- you have the City Council minutes for January 8th, 2018, and January 22nd, 2018, and study session notes as of December 18th, 2017, and study session notes for January 8th, 2018. If there are no corrections, we will show the minutes as approved as presented. That's what we'll do. Thank you. We have a proclamation, happy to say, for Heart Healthy Week, and we have a number of people that are going to join us. Are they here? Rachel and your group, come on up. Okay, I'm pleased to make a proclamation for Heart Healthy Week, February 19th through 25th, 2018. Whereas February is American Heart Month, a time to increase awareness about heart disease and learn more about preventative measures to reduce the risk. And whereas cardiovascular disease is the single leading cause of death for both men and women in the United States, responsible for 1 in 3 deaths in the United States each year. And whereas every person can take steps to reduce the risk factors associated with heart disease by maintaining a healthy weight, eating healthier foods, increasing physical activity, seeking regular physician checkups, and refraining from tobacco use. And whereas the city passes a resolution in 2014 confirming the city's commitment to encourage healthy opportunities. And whereas the city's Healthy Eating Active Living Committee, consisting of staff from Lutheran Medical Center, Kaiser Permanente, Jefferson County Public Health, Local Works, Local Business and Residents, is focused on promoting healthy opportunities for Wheat Ridge residents and businesses. Now therefore I, Bud Starker, Mayor of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, do hereby declare February 19th through 25th, 2018, a City of Wheat Ridge Heart Healthy Week, and encourage all citizens and businesses of Wheat Ridge to participate in this effort by participating in at least 3 Heart Healthy Activities, screenings, and/or information classes during Heart Healthy Week. Signed Bud Starker, Mayor. And I want to present this to -- Rachel, are you coming up here? Come on up.
And we would like to present you with the most fashionable t-shirt in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you very much. Do you have some things you'd like to say?
Well, thank you, Mayor Starker. My name is Rachel Hulteen, and I wear a lot of hats when it comes to talking about health in Wheat Ridge, and I'm going to keep this short because apparently it's a big night here at City Council. But really, it's a big night because we are excited to launch the first ever Heart Healthy Week in partnership with Lutheran Hospital and the different partners that you heard from Mayor Starker. What we're doing next week, starting -- we kick it off on the 19th at 10 o'clock with a Walk with the Mayor. And I bet he's going to be wearing his awesome t-shirt. But the rest of you guys actually have to earn your t-shirts. So we have 20 free activities throughout the week, and for each activity you complete, you get a heart point. And if you get 4 or more heart points, you earn one of these very fashionable t-shirts. And each activity is just an opportunity to get active, get involved, learn more, be healthy, and connect more with your neighbors who have the same interests. And it turns out Wheat Ridge is a great place to do that, and it's great because of who we are as a community and our great community partners. So if you want to learn more about the different activities and how to get involved, you can go to hearthealthywheatridge.com and hearthealthywheatridge.org and learn more about the schedule of activities. We hope to see you guys out there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, guys. All right, good to see you for coming down here. All right.
See you on Monday.
Okay, we're going to move into citizens' right to speak on, first, on items that are not on the agenda. And I know that a lot of people have come to speak on item number 2. That will be later in the order of the meeting. This is for items that are not on the agenda. And we have another -- a number of people here to speak. So our first speaker is Brianna Titone, I hope I said that right, with DJ Sasso on deck.
My name is Brianna Titone, T-I-T-O-N-E. I live at 6232 Kilmer Loop, and that's in Arvada, just your neighbors to the north. I'm also a candidate for House District 27, and I'm a member of the Jefferson County LGBTQ Caucus. And I wanted to talk to the City Council today and the mayor about conversion therapy and why I would like to urge you guys to sign a proclamation against it. We've been working with a lot of different municipalities to kind of have a grassroots movement towards banning conversion therapy in our state. The state bill has failed 3 times in a row because of the Republican Senate. They just kill this thing every time. It's up for -- it's going to be on the floor again this year. And I'm -- the caucus and myself, we're trying to get some more cities involved to show that the community really cares about this, that this is an important thing, and we want to protect the kids who are LGBTQ. You know, it's not their fault that they are. I'm a transgender person myself, so I can speak to that personally. Kids just want to grow up and be loved and be cared for, and they don't want to be shamed and ridiculed and abused, which is what conversion therapy really is. It's an abusive practice that's not endorsed by any organization of psychologists or psychologists and therapists and social workers. They all say it's a dangerous and unnecessary practice. And with your help, we can get some more cities involved, and we can bring awareness that this is happening in our state. And there's a lot of states that have similar bills this year that are coming up on the floor, and they're also going to have these being voted on. So we want Colorado to be in that forefront, and we need Wheat Ridge's help to try to get that passed on the state level. So if you guys can get this on the agenda before this bill comes up, this would really help our progress in trying to get this thing passed through the state level. It hasn't been announced yet when the bill's going to be passed, when it's going to be on the floor. But if anybody else is really concerned about this issue, I would encourage everybody here in this room to get involved. And if you have an LGBTQ person that you care about, this is something that we really need to worry about because it's about protecting the children and to make sure that they are actually not going to be abused. And it's just really kind of common sense. So please consider this, and pretty soon, so that we can get this going before that bill hits the floor. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is DJ Sasso.
Good evening, everyone. I am here to really echo Mayor Starker's plea for -- Oh, I'm sorry, so sorry. DJ Sasso, 5426 South Everett Way, Littleton, 80123. Okay, I'm going to start this again. So I am here really to echo Mayor Starker's plea for Red Month for a Heart Month. So as you know, that probably someone around you has been affected by heart or a stroke in the past. And about 200 and 2,200 Americans die every day from heart disease. And about every 40 seconds, someone dies from heart disease. When you talk about women themselves, about 80 seconds, a woman dies unnecessarily from heart disease. So Lutheran Medical Center really wants to promote Heart Month with a special Heart Healthy Day that is in collaboration with the City of Wheat Ridge, and that is on Thursday, February 22nd, from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. All events are free and open to the public, and we encourage Wheat Ridge staff and community to attend. The event location is the second-floor mezzanine of Lutheran Medical Center at 8300 West 38th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. The event includes free health screening from 10:01, informational booths from 10:00 to 1:00 p.m., women's heart health seminar hosted by Dr. Jody Klein at the Room in the Learning Center. Basically, space is limited, so please call 303-689-4595 if you're interested. Again, heart disease is number 1 killer for men and women in America and throughout the world. Attend a Heart Healthy Month event, determine if you are at risk for heart disease, and discover the resources that Lutheran Medical Center has provided for you and your family. Lutheran is a proud chest pain center and primary stroke center. Please join us, raise an awareness about heart disease and taking charge of your health. And also, please wear red. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Carol Matthews, and Robin Kupernick is on deck.
Carol Matthews, 3851 Hoyt Street, Wheat Ridge, Colorado, 80033. City Council, City Staff, and Wheat Ridge Citizens. A couple of weeks ago, I attended a Local Works Create 38th meeting. I would like to commend them on their efforts to create community involvement and for their fact-finding efforts. Some frightening statistics that I heard were that there has been a fatality on West 38th Avenue and many reported injuries on the west side of 38th Avenue between Kipling and Youngsfield on West 38th. Even more concerning was the news that improvements to West 38th Avenue are not included in the community plan, so permanent improvements are not expected to be addressed for the next 6 to 10 years. Local Works is compiling some temporary gadgets and diversions to ban aid the safety problems for citizens walking or biking on West 38th Avenue. However, these $100,000 to $200,000 expenditures do little to solve the growing traffic problems for cars driving along 38th, nothing to improve bus issues, and little to guarantee increased safety for pedestrians or bikers. In 1995, the City of Wheat Ridge did the right thing and funded a project to make 3 traffic lanes and sidewalks for safe pedestrian and bike travel along 38th Avenue from Wadsworth to Kipling. This effort made 38th Avenue safer pedestrians, bikers, and solved traffic flow problems for cars and buses. It also increased property values and encouraged homeowners along the street to make additional improvements on their home and landscapes. The National Cooperative of Cooperative Highway Research Program, 330, titled Effective Utilization of Street Width on Urban Arterial States, that restriping 2-lane arterial streets to 3-lane streets with 2 traffic lanes and 1-way turn lanes has a safety and flexibility advantages for vehicle traffic. They cite this method as an economical and effective way to use an arterial street. CDOT's 2007 Project Cost Reports suggest that 5,000 feet of 6-foot-wide sidewalk could be constructed along 38th Avenue for approximately $500,000. Please do the right things for the citizens of our city. Do not spend $100,000 to $200,000 of our tax dollars for a temporary and some unsubstantial ban aid for the safety problems on West 38th Avenue from Kipling to Youngfield. Do not wait for people to be injured and to die for 6 to 10 years. Make the investment for a permanent fix for pedestrians, bikers, and cars on West 38th Avenue now. Make this immediate city priority. Thank you.
Our next speaker, ladies and gentlemen, if we would just hold our applause for the evening. We really don't applaud in here for folks, whether they deserve it or not. Our next speaker is Robin Kupernick, and Rachel Hulteen is on deck. Please proceed.
Okay, thank you. So my name is Robin Kupernick. It's K-U-P-E-R-N-I-K. And I also come from Arvada. My address is 10433 West 62nd Avenue in Arvada. So I represent the Human Rights Team of Arvadans for Progressive Action. The Arvadans for Progressive Action Group is a 400-plus group of progressives, and they are from Arvada as well as some of the neighboring cities, and so thank you for hearing us today. I understand that Wheat Ridge may be considering a proclamation to protect the children of your city by prohibiting the dangerous practice of conversion therapy. Conversion therapy, in case you don't know, is a forced effort to change a child or a teen's stated sexual orientation. So tonight, I want to read you a list of the organizations that have made a stand against conversion therapy. And the reason they do so is because there's no indicated -- there's no evidence that it does any help, and there's quite a bit of evidence that it does some harm. So I'm going to read you the list of these organizations, but first I want to give you an example of some of the harm that conversion therapy can do. They've compared kiddos who are accepted or even mildly rejected by their parents to those who are put into programs called conversion therapy. And of the ones who are put through conversion therapy, these kids are more than 8 times more likely to have attempted suicide, nearly 6 times likelier to report high levels of depression, 3 times likelier to use illegal drugs, and 3 times as likely to be at high risk for HIV and STD. These risks are not insignificant. Okay, so let me start my list of organizations that have come out against conversion therapy. The City of Westminster, the City of Edgewater, American Academy of Child Adolescent Psychiatry, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the American Association for Family and Marriage Therapy, American College of Physicians, American Medical Association, American Psychiatric Association, American Psychoanalytical Association, American Psychological Association, American School Counselor Association, American School Health Association, National Association of Social Workers, Pan-American Health Organization, Regional Office of the World Health Organization, Just the Facts Coalition, World Psychiatric Association. Here are some governments who have also taken a stand against conversion therapy. The Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration, the Senior Advisor to the President of the United States, Andrew Cuomo, when he was Governor of New York, Chris Christie as Governor of New York, Kate Brown, Governor of Oregon, Jerry Brown, Governor of California. I made it through the long list. All these organizations agree that conversion therapy is very dangerous and has no stated benefit. I urge you to adopt such a proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Hulteen, and Richard Smallwood is on deck.
Good evening again. Rachel Hulteen, my address is 4690 Balsam Street. And I'm here to speak about 2 things tonight. First of all, I want to thank Carol Matthews for attending the last Activate 38th meeting. This is a grant that is through the Kaiser Permanente, and it is an opportunity for the city to explore in partnership, well, actually heavily informed by the community, what improvements are needed along 38th Avenue between Kipling and Youngfield to make it a safer place for people who depend on active transportation on the corridor. So I just want to just clarify, there are no recommendations in place. In fact, we're still actively seeking input from the community about what are the issues, what are the concerns, and what are the possibilities. So I encourage you, if you are, like me, very concerned about the safety for people, including a lot of kids who walk and bike that corridor, please consider attending our next meeting. It'll be in March. From the meetings that we are wrapping up in the next month or so, there will be an active living plan that will present to City Council. And should we get the second round of funding from Kaiser Permanente, from there, we'll look at a corridor plan in terms of what are some of the longer-term and more, I think, hefty financial investments the city can make to improve the corridor. So please get involved. It has a great outcome, hopefully, long-term. The second thing I'm here to speak about tonight, I guess it's technically the third after Heart Healthy. Tomorrow night is the Wheat Ridge Active Transportation Advisory Team's Annual State of the City. It's an opportunity for us to celebrate the achievements in the last year that the city's made to improve walking and biking in the city. We are really excited to have a very special featured guest. Mayor Bud Starker will be there to talk about the city's vision for the next couple of years. And then it's also an opportunity for the community members to share what's important to them, what are the things they're excited about, where would they like to see more attention. We have a couple of exciting new programs this year, and we will be continuing our Ride for Reading program in May, and I believe again in October, in which we deliver books by bike to Title I schools. So tomorrow night, State of the City, it's at Colorado Plus from 6:30 to 8:30, and we hope all of you will be able to join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Richard Smallwood, and Dorothy Archer is on deck. Rochelle Smallwood, pardon me.
Hi, my name is Rachel Smallwood. And my address is 6108 Route R-O-U-T-T Court, Arvada 8004. I'm here in support of a couple of people you've already heard from, Brianna Titone on a conversion therapy ban. So I think a lot of people probably have friends or family who are LGBTQ. I know that I do. And a couple of family members in particular, my family is pretty progressive and open-minded, and yet the few -- the couple of people in our family who are LGBTQ still struggled for a long time to come out of the closet and become who they truly are. And they also struggle with depression and anxiety. And that's when they have a family who loves them no matter what. So like Robin had noted, kids who go through conversion therapy experience far more difficult mental illness struggles and sometimes suicide, even beyond the people that I know. So, and as Robin had noted, research shows that conversion therapy leads to mental illness and suicide. And what this bill that's going through the state legislator addresses are children under the age of 18. So this truly is about protecting our children. And parents do have rights, but there are exceptions to that across the board. They're not allowed to neglect and abuse their children. And when the research is so staggeringly shows such harm to children, then it is a form of abuse, and parents should not be allowed to send their children to something that is known to cause irreparable damage. So because it's already failed 3 times in the state legislator, we really need to start locally. And we really need cities all across the state to stand up for our LGBTQ children and tell the state legislator that they should vote yes on a conversion therapy ban. Westminster and Edgewater have already signed a proclamation, and I urge you to follow suit. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dorothy Archer.
Good evening, Mayor Starker, staff, and citizens. Dorothy Archer, 3640 Marshall Street. Before I speak to my own agenda, I just want to say I stand with Lutheran. If it weren't for you and your staff, I would not be standing here tonight. Thank you. I want to address all the people that are in here in attendance tonight because I know a lot of you are Wheat Ridge citizens, residents. A lot of you are not. My issue stands, as I've been here week after week after week. If you are not aware of the fact that there is a standing rule in Wheat Ridge that a home can be built 35 feet tall with a flat roof, we are being attacked as North Denver is being attacked, especially Old Wheat Ridge, which is east of Wadsworth. This issue has come up many times. Council, some of the past members of council have addressed this issue for R1C and R3, changed it from 35 feet to 35 feet with a 15-foot bulk plane. If you'd like to see what that looks like, go by 3310 Chase Street. If you live in a ranch-style home or a bungalow home, as most of us do on East Wheat Ridge, you shudder if a home goes up for sale for fear it will be picked up, scraped, and you will be next door to an apartment house. Every zone in Wheat Ridge but the 2 I addressed can go up 35 feet with a flat roof. We need help with the residents and citizens of Wheat Ridge. And I would like to ask at this time for someone on council to make a motion that this be readdressed and be studied properly. You've heard from the citizens. You even had 100 names in R1C and have totally ignored the fact that 35 feet is not acceptable with or without a bulk plane. plane. Edgewater has changed to 25 feet. Arvada is in process of studying that. Paul told me himself, I gave you his name and the printouts, Arvada is studying it. It is no longer an acceptable thing. Golden does not have 35 feet. We are asking you one more time to open this for study and bring these houses down to an amenable position for those of us who live here, 25 feet with a slope roof. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes all of the names that I have on the roster to speak on items that are not on the agenda. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on an item that is not on the agenda? Please come to the podium.
Why not, right? I got the audience, so I might as well say so. My name is John Clark. I live at 4665 Swadley Street here in Wheat Ridge District 4. I'm here as the president of the Everett Middle School PTA. That's right, I'm the president. I always have to look, because I usually get a few strange looks when I say I'm the president of the PTA. So I'd actually like to thank council member Hoppy personally for her generous donation to the Everett PTA. I know there's, there's a, I don't even know what the word is, but during the election, I saw a lot of you all in my schools. And when I say my schools, I mean Everett Middle School, I mean Wheat Ridge High School, and I mean all the elementary schools. I'm hoping that you'll come back. I'm hoping it wasn't just a photo op that we needed our picture in the paper. So if you're not aware, there's a lot of great things going on at Wheat Ridge High School. There's a lot of, my oldest son is there. There's a lot of great things going on at Everett Middle School. My youngest son is there. Lots of great things going on in the elementary schools. I don't have any kids that young anymore, but I am involved enough to know what's going on, and there's some great things. So if I have an audience of at least potential people that are living in Wheat Ridge, but at least they're working in Wheat Ridge, I would like to invite each and every one of them to come out and explore our schools. Everett's Accountability is tomorrow night at 5:30. Go ahead, write it down, 5:30 in the library. If you have nothing else to do on Valentine's Day, 7 o'clock at Wheat Ridge High School is our PTSA meeting. So I don't expect to see you all there, but one or two would be nice. So again, Councilman Hoppy, I appreciate it. You know, I really like when the city and the schools can get together and do great things. And while I'm here, I know I got about 30 more seconds, I'll give the same shout-out as Dorothy did to the folks at Lutheran, because my oldest, both my sons were born at Lutheran. My oldest, now a senior at Wheat Ridge High School, was born premature there and spent the first 58 or 59 days of his life there. So shout-out to you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the room who would like to speak on any item that is not on the agenda? Okay, I don't see anybody else, so we will move on. We will go to item number one with the Consent Agenda. Councilor Hoppy, would you introduce that item, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent Agenda, item 1A through F. A. Resolution Number 10-2018, amending the fiscal year 2018 budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation for the reappropriation and reincumbrence of 2017 fiscal year encumbered funds in the amount of $3,814,603.10. B. Motion to approve payment to Kaiser Permanente for January 2018 membership billing in the amount of $195,198.45. C. Motion to award contract and approve subsequent payments to Diaz Construction Group, Lakewood, Colorado, in the amount of $347,392, with a contingency amount of $34,740 for the 2017 miscellaneous street and drainage project. D. Resolution 11-2018, amending the fiscal year 2017 general fund budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental budget appropriation in the amount of $122,327.90 for on-call building permit inspections, plan review, and other support services and related costs. E. Motion to make an appointment to fill a vacancy on the Board of Adjustment, District 2, term to expire 3/2/20. F. Motion to appoint Wanda Singh and Nancy Snow to the Election Commission.
Thank you. We have one speaker signed up to speak on an item number one. Rachel Holtein.
Hello again. I'm still Rachel Holtein, and I still live at 4690 Balsam Street. That hasn't changed. I just want to speak tonight about Agenda Item Number One in kind of a broad sense, in that every time we're given the opportunity to come up here and speak about things that are on the agenda, this is an extraordinarily packed room of people. Those of us who are here, you know, every, you know, once or twice a month, we happen to know, we're lucky if we get eight people. Sometimes we get 20. And so on a night like tonight, when we have a lot of people and we're speaking about items on the agenda, we feel like there's a huge representation from our community here tonight. But in fact, on any night, including tonight, there's a huge part of our community who's not being heard. And I frequently struggle with trying to understand how are we, as a city, hearing from those people who may not be informed on things like items on the agenda tonight that are changing in real time? And how are we ensuring that the vast majority of our community who's not as civically engaged proactively is actually getting this information? Because a lot of the information that is on the agenda tonight broadly has changed since it was put out there in any type of broader sense to the community. So I just, I want to just put a placeholder tonight that there are a lot of people we're not hearing from. And there are a lot of people who don't know in real time as things change. And it would be nice to hear from the city what's being done to reach those people to make sure that their voices are being heard too, because they're very much a part of our city. They vote, they pay taxes, they're my neighbors, and I want to make sure that they're helping inform important decisions. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the only sign-ups I had on this item. Is there anyone in the room that would like to speak on anything on item number one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
On item E, the appointment to the Board of Adjustment, the title was not clear on who that appointment was recommended for. Plus, if council does appoint, the recommendation that was in the staff report, appointing Larry Richmond to the board, that opens up an alternate position, and staff recommends that that alternate be filled by Robert DeVry, who also turned an application in from District 2 for that Board of Adjustment. So you may want to do a separate motion or restate that motion with actual names if council supports that.
I think when we get to the motion, we'll
Okay.
try to take that into consideration. Before I move to a motion on the Consent Agenda, is there any item that any councilor would like to take off of the Consent Agenda where we will approve these en masse? Mr. Urban?
Just to be clear then, when we get to item E, that will be the case with Mr. Richmond and Mr. DeVry?
We'll see, we'll see what Ms. Hoppy does with the motion, but that is the assumption.
All right. I'm okay.
Okay. Ms. Hoppy, would you please make a motion for the Consent Agenda, item number one?
I would like to move to approve the Consent Agenda, items A, B, C, D, and F, as previously stated, and to change E to motion to make appointment to fill vacancy to the Board of Adjustment, District 2, term to expire 3/2/20, and to appoint Larry Richmond and Robert DeVry as an alternate.
As an alternate.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Hoppy, a second by Mr. Duran, as their discussion. Mr. Matthews.
Patrick, you confused me a little bit. This changing in appointees, was there the proper advertisement done on that?
The city clerk can speak to that. City clerk office handles these appointments.
Well, what I can say is that the original vacancy was advertised, and Mr. Richmond, who is currently an alternate, appointed, applied to fill that vacancy in District 2, which is where he lives, so that's fine. What that does is now creates a new vacancy. And hate to be cantankerous, but I think that opens a new vacancy for an alternate position that should in fact be advertised. We don't really have a process in place to just automatically promote people from an alternate position into another position, or to immediately go to a different place than what they, what they applied for. That second gentleman applied for the position in District 2, and since you're going to do Mr. Richmond, there's no really provision to just send, slip him in there in that other place. But I would probably defer to Mr. Dahl on that.
Ms. Hoppy?
I have a suggestion that we can amend the motion to leave Mr. Richmond in the at-large and then put Mr. DeVry in the open vacancy that was advertised. They're both from District 2. Or was it backwards?
I don't have my book open, but Mr. DeVry's, I don't think he lives in District 2.
Oh, I thought you were in District 1. I apologize. I thought we were both from District 2.
Yeah, to that point, I just would encourage us to appoint Mr. Richmond to the Board of Adjustment, if only because of his architectural penmanship and his application. But as it relates to Mr. DeVry, I think that, as it relates to being in an alternate position, as much as that position is an alternate in its duties, I think it's appropriate to appoint him to that at this time, just given the fact that he's already applied, and this is an alternate position. It's not a full member of the board, and we can go forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. Ann. Did you have anything? Okay. Mr. Matthews?
Well, it's, I think it's kind of a slippery slope. He's still a member of the commission. He's appointed as an alternate, and if we've not followed proper procedure, we should back up and advertise the position and go again with a separate motion, you know, in whatever time period is appropriate after everyone's had a chance to apply.
Perhaps I'd ask our attorney, are you aware whether we have a specified procedure under which we advertise these?
The city does have a procedure. When there's a vacancy, we advertise it. I think the city clerk's right. I think that if you appoint Mr. Richmond, that the effect of that is to create a vacancy in the alternate position, and vacancies are advertised.
Do we have any more discussion? Mr. Ann?
Did Robert DeVry, did he fill out an application?
Yeah, Mr. DeVry submitted an application on November 17th of 2017. We keep applications for, on file for one year.
Okay, so he went through the process?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Urban?
I guess at this time would be appropriate to pull item E from the Consent Agenda, so we can deal with that separately.
Well, actually, we have a motion, we have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as specified with these two gentlemen nominated for the positions that they've been nominated. So we might want to, if you want to change it, perhaps an amendment to the motion would be in order.
So I'd like to amend the Consent Agenda motion to remove item E from that Consent Agenda motion. Does that compute?
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can I, who was the origin, a second to the original motion of?
Mr. Ann.
Durant, okay, thank you.
So we have a new amendment, or an amendment by Ms. Hoppy and seconded by Mr. Duran, to remove item number E from the Consent Agenda. Is there any discussion on the amendment? Okay, we will be voting on the amendment. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, we have not dealt with item E.
And before you do so.
Yes, sir.
The city manager tells me that Mr. DeVry also applied for the vacancy, whatever that was, which I assume was the vacancy on the Board of Adjustment. I'm not sure. To me, it's relevant whether, you know, how that was advertised, whether it was a vacancy on the Board of Adjustment, or he's applying, or if he was applying for the alternate position per se.
Let's ask clerk.
Well, that, there, the routine board and commission appointments will be happening in a few weeks, and the alternate position, boy, I don't know, I believe was, is, was part of that advertisement.
You know, if that's the case, you've advertised, he's responded to the advertisement, he's eligible.
Ms. Davis?
I guess if it's advertised as a vacancy, then
Yeah.
it's advertised correctly, and we could use his application.
It was advertised as part of the yearly process, and those appointments are going to be coming up in a couple of weeks.
Mr. Ann?
So he applied in November of 2017, right, with the understanding if something opened and came available, you have his application, and you keep those active for a year? Okay. I just want to reinforce that, that he did apply and went through the process. Thank you.
But, but that, that vacancy doesn't exist until you pass this motion.
Well, we have a vacancy on it because of resignation, correct?
You mean if Mr. Richmond resigns?
No, there was, there was a resignation from the Board of Adjustment.
Correct.
And you advertised it, and we got two, two, two applications.
Correct.
Mr. Richmond and Mr. DeVry.
Actually, Mr. DeVry's application is questionable, because he doesn't live in the district that he applied for. The only time we do that is when there isn't someone who lives in that district. And the vacancy, the resignation happened in District 2. Larry Richmond, who was an alternate and happens to live in District 2, applied for that position, as did this other gentleman, but he doesn't live in that district. If we were desperate and didn't have anybody from District 2, we could certainly put him in there.
Are there other applicants now?
No, just those two.
Okay, so we have, we have one applicant?
Actually, Mr. Richmond is the only legitimate applicant for the District 2 vacancy.
Mr. Richmond lives in District 2 and has applied for the, for the position in District 2. Mr. DeVry's lives in District 1 and has applied for the position. Mr. Fitzgerald?
I was going to ask the city attorney if this procedure is set up in the rules of order or in code?
Neither. I think it's in the, if I'm not mistaken, I think it's in the rules of procedure for the Board of Adjustment, isn't it?
It's, well, it's in the code. It's in the code about procedures. And now in this alternate position, when they pass this, if they indeed appoint Mr. Richmond to the District 2 vacancy, then there will be a vacancy of an alternate position, which I maintain now needs to be advertised. Mr. DeVry's application notwithstanding, we can throw it in the mix, but since there won't be a vacancy till in a couple of minutes when you pass this item, there won't be a vacancy of an at-large position.
Okay. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Mr. Dahl, will a motion to suspend the rules be sufficient?
No, because if it's a code-based No, because if it's a code-based requirement, you don't take that, you know, don't take that motion.
Mr. Urban?
Okay, I don't want to curtail this discussion around this particular item, but I believe that we're on the consent agenda motion since we amended that. And we need to take a vote on that prior to further discussing this particular issue.
Well, we've already passed A, B, C, D, and F.
No, we passed the amendment to...
We passed the amendment, huh? Okay.
So then we need to vote on the consent agenda, then we can move to item E, I think.
Okay. Let us, let us poll the council on consent agenda A, B, C, D, and F.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Mr. Mayor, since I'm the one that brought this up, I'm sorry to bring it up. Let's, I suggest we just hold off on the alternate, we'll bring it back at a later date. Does that work for council?
So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Richmond to the Board of Adjustment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Urban, second by Ms. Durand to avoid Mr. Richmond to the Board of Adjustment. Any discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews?
Was it Richmond or DeVries?
Richmond. Richmond lives in District 2.
Question is for Mr. Richmond. Are we ready to vote?
There'll be a test on this.
Clerk, please poll the council.
What a web we weave.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, thank you. Let us move to item number two on the agenda. Mr. Fitzgerald, will you please introduce this item? I'd like to introduce the item, please.
Let me see, one moment, please. I'm looking through all the stuff before that. Council Bill Number 01-2018 in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located on the west side of Interstate 70 between approximately 34th Avenue and Clear Creek from planned commercial development, PCD, to planned mixed-use development, PMUD, case number WZ-16-07 slash Clear Creek Crossing. The issue: Evergreen Development Company acquired 109 acres of undeveloped property on the west side of I-70 and south of Clear Creek in December 2016 with the intent of developing a mixed-use commercial and residential development. Evergreen has applied for rezoning of this property from the current planned commercial development to planned mixed-use development designation. In contrast to the previous zoning on the property, which was focused on retail use, the intent is to create a development with a much broader mix of residential, employment, retail, hotels, restaurants, and entertainment. The applicant is requesting approval of an outline development plan supported by a vision book that establishes the intended design and architectural themes and materials, as well as a design pattern book that includes the more substantive development regulations.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, I understand you had some questions you wish to ask council?
Yes, I'd like to make just a little procedural record on a couple of things before you take any substantive motions. And for that purpose, let me just lay out some facts and then I can get some responses from council and make that record. Because this is a quasi-judicial matter, because rezoning always is, and you sit in your role as judges, it's important that we make a record around any interest that council members may have that could potentially affect their ability to provide a fair and impartial decision on the matter. And so for that purpose, I want to enter into the record the fact that we do have some council members that are employees of SCL, the parent corporation of organization for Lutheran, and we have a council member that's on the Lutheran Foundation, which is supportive of the Lutheran mission. The employees are Leah Dozeman and Christie Davis, and Zach Urban is the member of the Lutheran Foundation. Now, having said that, the fact that you're an employee or you're on the foundation does not mean that you're not able to participate as judges in the case. And the fact that your employer may have a position, and Lutheran may have a position on the matter, that doesn't impute that position to you as employees when you're sitting on the council. That's only true if one of two things is true, that you have some financial interest in the, in the application itself, this 109 acres and that application, or you feel as a result of your employment that you're not able to make a fair and impartial decision on the matter. So either one of those would take you off, but if they aren't true, then you're allowed to remain and should remain. I think it's important for me to emphasize to council and to the people here that council members are required to do their jobs and to be on the council and to vote. And it's only in the rare case where there's some financial interest that would prevent them from acting in a fair manner, that they're not allowed to vote. So having laid that, that kind of background, just to make this sort of faster, rather than going through each three council members individually, can you all confirm that none of you have a financial interest in the applicant Evergreen Development or in this property, this 109 acres? Is that true?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And secondly, that's the second part of that puzzle that I mentioned, which is can each of you affirm that you're able to make a fair and impartial decision on any vote that's taken around this project?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you very much. The other thing I do want to do on this particular application, because we're all aware there's been a large number of cards, letters, emails, flyers, other forms of communication, which is the American way, and I honor that. And a lot of that has been directed at you. I have advised you before this matter and matters previously that when you sit as a quasi-judicial decision maker, you need to politely tell people when they want to provide you with information and have you respond, that that has to come to the council as a whole and your response and your action on that has to take place in this room, not out in the public, as would be true if it were a legislative matter. And I know you've all received a lot of information and I've uniformly asked you, and I know that you have, to direct that to the staff so that it can be copied for the entire council. I think there are giant packets of letters, both for and against, that are in the record, and that's great that you have. And I just want to confirm that there are no council members that have engaged in discussions where you've not only received information but have responded substantively to the conversations or the outreach to you, other than, and I know you've done this and it's perfectly fine, you've responded to people saying, hi, I actually can't, you know, engage with you, and instead I'm going to be sending this on to the staff. No one has gone further than that, correct?
Correct.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Mr. Mayor?
Allowing me to delay things a little.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
If I could, just for the benefit of our citizens, because a lot of people don't understand the quasi-judicial aspect of this and where it comes from. If Mr. Dahl could give us the Cliff Notes version of who's the governing body that sets this rule and law, and just in 25 words or less, kind of let them know why we cannot talk to you.
Is somebody going to keep track of the number of words? Oh, that's seven words already. Great. I'm down to 18.
You may respond, but 25 words is not a great deal.
Zoning matters involve specific pieces of property. This is a large property, but it's still a specific piece of property. You make a judgment about that property's rezoning based upon the rules in the city codebook. In doing that, you're acting like a judge. No one would want, if they were in a lawsuit, to see that the judge went out to lunch with the other party. If you're the plaintiff, you wouldn't want to see the defendant out to lunch with the judge and having a conversation with them. You'd want to know what that person said to the judge, and you'd want to have that in the same arena where you had the chance to say that to. That arena for you as judges is here tonight, not separately. And that's the essence of what a quasi-judicial proceeding is, and that's why you bring it all to this room, good, bad, and indifferent. You bring it all here because you're the judges and need to act the same way judges in a civil case would act.
Thank you. So we are here. The applicant has asked to postpone Council Bill Number 01-2008. And I understand the applicant is here tonight. Would you please come to the podium and address your request for postponement?
Mayor and council, Tyler Carlson with Evergreen Developments, 1873 South Bel Air Street, Suite 1200, Denver, Colorado. Want to thank everyone for being here tonight at our Valentine's party. I'm a little shy on Valentine's, so I don't think I'll be able to give enough for everyone here. But we are requesting a continuance of our hearing tonight for purposes of engaging in some additional dialogue with the neighborhood. I think everyone's here tonight because there's been a flurry of information and misinformation that's come out in the last couple of weeks. And we'd like an opportunity to have another neighborhood meeting, probably at the rec center again, to have questions and answers, to go over our plans. There are many of you here who probably have not attended our several prior neighborhood meetings. And we want to be able to have that engagement with those who are interested in participating. And we'd also like to have an opportunity to continue to explore different development options for Planning Area 1, which is our employment area. We are not under contract with any user, a hospital or otherwise, on that property right now. So we look forward to engaging with the market and discussing the project with more potential users over the next coming weeks. And we believe that by continuing this hearing, that will allow us time to further dialogue with the marketplace and also to engage in more constructive discussions with neighbors and stakeholders who are interested in our project.
Thank you. Mr. Fitzgerald, I would entertain a motion to postpone.
In accordance with our normal practice and in, also in accordance with Section 26-109.1 of the Weaver's Code of Laws, I would like to move to postpone Council Bill 01-2018 in ordinance approving the rezoning of property located on the west side of Interstate 70 between approximately 34th Avenue and Clear Creek from planned commercial development, PCD, to planned mixed-use development, PMUD, case number WZ-16-707 slash Clear Creek Crossing until March 26th, 2018.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by Mr. Fitzgerald and a second by Ms. Hoppy to postpone Council Bill 01-2008. Is there discussion on the motion?
Point of order?
Mr. Matthews?
Do we not generally first allow public comment before we go into our discussion?
What we are doing is postponing council bill, and when we postpone the council bill, we will not enter, we will not open the public hearing. So the public hearing will be postponed until March 26th, at which time everyone is invited back here to, to talk to the issue. Sir, you're out of order.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Matthews?
The rules, I know Mr. Dahl was shaking his head, but the rules do state that our citizens get to speak on any agenda item, and this is an agenda item.
That's correct, but the motion in front of the council is a procedural motion, which is are you going to take up the agenda item or not? And if you choose to take it up, then absolutely, the hearing gets opened, you take all the testimony. But if you choose, as the council, as a motion in front of them, if the motion passes, then procedurally, you haven't taken up the item. You've introduced it, but you've not taken it up for any kind of action. And if it's postponed, then public comment is postponed until the future date.
But would not public comment perhaps influence on how we would vote on this?
It may well, but this is a procedural motion, and you do not have a procedural, public comment on procedural motions before you get to the item. It's no different, for example, than the motions you take on approving or amending the agenda, for example. You take those to determine whether or not something will be on the agenda tonight or at another time.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban?
Specific to the motion, I appreciate the developer coming and expressing his request for continuance. My question is, it relates to the specific concerns that they're going to be addressing in the interim. What, and this may be a question for the city attorney, at what point do the modifications or amendments or changes to this particular case necessitate a revisitation of this in front of the planning commission? And how does that, how do we weigh the changes that were made and whether the planning commission should have a chance to review those changes, if any?
Sure, I think that's a fair question. I think we'll have to see what we get from the applicant. If, and I would have to sit down with the planning, the community development staff to look at whether and to what extent what they've proposed is different enough from their application to affect and require a planning commission review. And without seeing it, I can't tell you. There are some kinds of amendments where if you take this kind of fast food restaurant out and put that kind of fast food restaurant in, it's still a fast food restaurant. And without sort of guessing at what they're intending, but that gives you an example of how I would say, that wouldn't trigger a planning commission review if however, you've got a use area that went through planning commission review for residential, and now you want to do mixed-use office and residential upstairs. That, you know, that may well be something that has, that the amended application have to go back through the planning commission. We'll need to see what they are interested in changing, and then I'll sit down with Mr. Johnstone and help make that determination.
And I guess the follow-up question to that is relative to the first reading that we had in past. We have a particular case file and whatnot representing that first reading going on to now where we are today in the second reading. So my next question would be then, just as related to the same, and I trust your judgment as it relates to that, but I just want to make sure that, do we have to bring this back to first reading as well? I don't want to necessarily have everybody start over on this, but I want to make sure we follow the right process.
Also a good question. I think the function of first reading is to set a matter for hearing. And so I'm very confident that if the, if the scope of the application has changed, is, falls in the, we're switching out fast food restaurants category, and there may be others, we'll be using that as the example, then, then no reason to go back to first reading. The function of first reading is really a scheduling function. And you've done some rescheduling tonight if this motion passes. If however, the application is markedly different, then we, at a minimum, have to go back to planning commission. And at that point, might likely just trigger a new first reading, which is really just more scheduling.
Mr. Matthews?
Mr. Dahl, who makes the decision as to whether or not this is a change in scope that requires re-advertising and all the other process?
Paul, I'll sit down with Mr. Johnstone and we'll make a recommendation to you. If it needs to be re-referred to the planning commission because of the change, then I need to think about whether I need a city council action for that or if it just goes to planning commission. And frankly, I wasn't prepared for that question, but that's as well, that's as close to the answer as I can give you. I need to review what it is that they suggest and then make a recommendation.
Ms. Davis?
I guess I'd like to go back to the citizen's right to speak because I think, I mean, I know we did, if this is a postponement and the folks here don't have a right to speak because we're postponing the public hearing, then all of these folks could have, I guess, spoke for items not on the agenda. So they could have all spoke about that. So I guess, I guess if we could maybe ask them to be respectful of our time and we be respectful of their time, maybe we could find a happy medium and the council could give folks some time to speak. I guess, I thought they were going to be able to speak, and I'm guessing by the crowd here, they thought they were going to be able to speak. So I'm just wondering if there could be some kind of compromise that, you know, council would be willing to consider. So I'd like to make a motion to allow, even if we limit the time a little bit, I'd like to make a motion to allow the folks here to be able to speak. Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to... Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and allow, am I allowed to do that, Mr. Doll?
Yes, yes, you can. This would be a suspension of the rules. The rule being, and I realize it's not as written, but I'm telling you, it's the truth. If you have a procedural motion, you don't take public comment on it, but you can. And so I think the right form would be a motion to suspend the rules. And if that motion passes, I think it'd also be important to have the applicant consent that, on the record, that while this is not the scheduled hearing, that they don't have objection to that. They're here and they were prepared, so I don't think that there's a due process problem, but I'd like to make a record around that, too. But let's take the motion first.
The first motion is? And this motion to suspend the rules would supersede the motion on the table? Do we have a motion on the table?
So should we first do the motion to postpone and then?
Yes, because if that motion fails, you're doing the hearing tonight anyhow, and your motion would be moot.
Okay, so we'll do the motion and then I'll, the motion to postpone, and then I'll do the motion to suspend the rules.
Is there any further discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban.
I guess just as it relates to procedure-wise, if we continue this public hearing to March 26, what are we then doing, what are we suspending the rules for to allow public comment if there's no public hearing in which for people to provide that public comment? If the motion that we're passing right now says that we're postponing this public hearing to March 26, what is the mechanism which this public comment is received?
Well, it's out of order. It's not provided for by your rules, and that's why I'd be asking the applicant to consent to having what amounts to a hearing, at least hearing testimony, before the scheduled later hearing on an application that may have changed. And what I would do probably is, there's, I think we probably addressed the due process issues. It's awkward and it's difficult to, you know, I understand the desire to hear people in the room, but what record are you creating on what application, especially if it's going to change? And we don't know that, and I don't think the applicant's prepared to tell us that. But what I'd probably do is get the applicant to consent, if this all goes the direction it might. And then come the hearing on the 26th of March, I'd probably have a motion that the applicant would consent to, to incorporate whatever the testimony was tonight into that hearing record. You, as the decision-makers, can always pick, you know, you can always give appropriate weight to testimony. And if on the 26th, the application's a little different, you are allowed and can give appropriate weight to testimony you've heard tonight versus testimony you hear on the 26th on a changed application. And that's all right. You have the ability to do that.
And I guess just- Mr. Fitzgerald?
The way, I just would like to restate the way I understand this. If we approve the resolution that's on the floor, then the hearing will actually take place on the date specified, the 26th. But if we then accept the motion to suspend the rules, we're honoring the will of all the citizens that are here. So it seems to me like we're eating our cake and getting it too, or whatever that saying is. So that seems to me like the right thing to do. And they can come back again the next time if they want to come back the next time.
Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As it relates to the motion on the table, and I know in our first reading, we had language relative to the posting requirements. This particular motion doesn't include those posting requirements. Is that an assumed requirement to offer proper notification and publication of this future hearing?
I appreciate you asking that. And I spoke with the staff beforehand, knowing that there would be this request of the applicant. And it was my advice to them and the city will republish, repost for the, if this motion passes, for the March 26th, so that we have full notice of that March 26 hearing. And that's maybe a little more notice than you would need, but it's always better to give more notice than less. As you know, you can continue a hearing, and the people that were here and heard it continued are unnoticed that it's going to happen on the 26th, but there are people that aren't here. And on a subject of this importance, it's my advice that the city spend the money, re-note, repost for that meeting on the 26th.
Thank you.
Yep.
Additional discussion on the motion? Okay, we have a motion to postpone and a proper second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Ms. Davis.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules, to allow for public comment on this matter, and to then allow for legal, to have the applicant give consent to place that comment in the record for the public hearing, the future public hearing.
Second.
Second. Motion by Ms. Davis, second by Mr. Fitzgerald.
And I'd ask the public to be respectful of your time limits when you come up for public comment.
Okay, is there a discussion? Mr. Urban.
This question's for the city attorney relative to this open forum, as it were. And during a normal public hearing, there is a swearing-in process of those that are to speak. How does that process apply during this suspension of the rules?
Well, it's procedural, and I think, again, more process is better than less. And so I think we should have a mass swearing-in if this motion passes. It'll sound a little like the Pledge of Allegiance, but we should, we should do that. If the motion passes, then next, I want to hear from the applicant and get their statement on the record, and then we'll do the swearing-in.
Is there further discussion on the motion to suspend the rules? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, Mr. Doll, would you, would the applicant please come to the podium? And Mr. Doll, will you question the applicant appropriately?
Sir, maybe you'd restate your name, address, and company affiliation first, if you wouldn't mind.
Sure. Tyler Carlson, managing partner of Evergreen Development, 1873 South Bel Air Street, Suite 1200, Denver, Colorado. The applicant and owner of Clear Creek Crossing.
Mr. Carlson, in light of the fact that this was originally scheduled for a public hearing tonight, and you have heard that that hearing's now been postponed to March the 22nd, or excuse me, 6th, that you're requesting, in the event there may be amendments to the application, do you have objection to the council taking sworn testimony from the members of the public that are here tonight, such that that testimony would be incorporated into the record of the hearing on the 26th? But understanding, as I've advised the council, that the council would have the right on the 26th to give appropriate weight to the testimony tonight inasmuch as it may well not pertain to the application as is proposed to be amended. But I'm taking too long to ask you if you have objection to the council taking the sworn testimony tonight.
I do not object. I think it's only fair that, you know, if we're getting more time to have more dialogue on our side and to, you know, share our thoughts and see what's going on with the marketplace and what interests we might have, that it's only fair that those who have skipped the Olympics tonight, that they get a chance to come out and say their piece. And, you know, we've actively engaged the community over the last two years. We've had a bunch of neighborhood meetings, and I don't intend to stop engaging the community tonight or any other time, so absolutely not.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next order of business would be for you to swear all those, take an oath from all those intending to present testimony, that the testimony they'll present will be in the way you usually do.
You'll get me to start moving back towards the sign-in sheet. Okay, if you are here tonight and would like to speak on this matter, please stand and raise your hand, and I'm going to do a mass swearing-in. Do you swear or affirm to tell the whole truth as you understand it in this matter? If you do, answer "I do." Thank you. I'm not sure exactly what the most effective way to be, because it looks like that not everyone who was here wanted to sign up, but let me go through the signup sheet like we do it, starting out with Sarah Ellis and, pardon me, Chad, or, let's see what this name is. Chris Woodsley? And perhaps Chris Woodsley or Chaz Woodsley on deck.
Can we agree on the time limits and that the clerk will be running the lights?
Our normal time limits are three minutes, unless you have more time given to you.
Could I just ask everybody, when you come up, please say your first and last name, spell your last name, give your address. If you've signed in and don't want to publicly give your address, but we have a record of it, just say what city you're from. And please hold your mouth about two inches from the microphone. Thank you.
And if someone before you has said what you essentially want to say, it's okay to come up and say, "I affirm with what's been said before." So anyway, we'll get through this. Continue, please.
Hi, my name is Sarah Ellis, last name E-L-L-I-S, 2821 Alton Street, Denver, 80238. I'm going to decline to speak at this time until we see what the end proposal looks like.
Next is Chaz Woolsey. I'm sorry.
No problem, I'll help you out with that. My name is Chris Woolsey, W-O-O-L-S-E-Y, 1117 Preserve Circle, Golden, Colorado, 80401. And I also will decline to speak at this time.
Thank you. Our third speaker is Grant Wicklund. Andrea Birch is on deck.
My name is Grant Wicklund, that was right. And my address is 6170 Virgil Street, Arvada, Colorado, 80403. Good evening. Lutheran has been a trusted partner in Wheat Ridge for more than 100 years, and is the largest employer in the city, has a vested interest in its economic success. Let me be clear that we fully support the commercial, retail, residential aspects of Clear Creek Crossing Development as a great boon for this city. However, the reason we are all here tonight is that we cannot support the addition of a fourth healthcare provider in our area. Lutheran Medical Center has an unparalleled economic impact on the community. We provide $125 million annually in payroll. We have more than 3,000 people traveling to the campus daily, supporting the business community along Wadsworth and the West 38th Corridor. We have 2,000 associates, most of whom seem to be here tonight, 900 physicians, and 600 volunteers. We do 16,000 inpatients per year, 2,800 births, and 185,000 outpatient visits. We also have one of the busiest emergency departments in the state with almost 74,000 annual visits. We're often number two or number three busiest in the state. As a part of our strong commitment to this community, Lutheran has invested great resources in capital improvements, in our people, and in the successful quality initiatives and innovations that benefit our patients. We provide the highest quality care at the lowest cost we can afford to provide it. I want to thank everyone for coming here tonight. It means a great deal to me. And this has changed. It appears to me that there is a dropping or a release of a contract to, with another healthcare provider that would build a hospital on this campus and was the reason for the rezoning request. And listening to Mr. Carlson this afternoon or this evening, it sounds to me as if he has no contract with a client. And as a result, as much as I appreciate our family being here and standing together tonight, I want to say that we should wait and see, have conversations with Mr. Carlson, and move forward, given the fact that we have this opportunity that seems to be open to explore other opportunities and help him to do so, too. It's never been our intention to stand in the way of real estate development or growth in this city. And in fact, the very opposite, that's what we want to see. We just cannot abide the fact that we would have another hospital provider building unnecessary beds and raising costs in this community. I've heard it commented that we don't, are afraid of competition, and I believe there's people here from St. Anthony's tonight. We compete. It's very healthy competition. We compete with Ortho Colorado as well, very healthy competition. But exceeding the number of beds necessary here in a market where there's actually declining usage of inpatient beds is not in the best interest of the community. Happy to compete, but happy to take care of patients and try our best to keep healthcare costs down. This is one of the most overbedded communities in the United States, the Denver area. Has anybody seen their healthcare costs dropping as a result of that overbedding, that competition? I don't think so. So we'd like to, I'd like to suggest to all of my family members here, my friends, the physicians that are here, let's hold our thoughts and let's see what comes up, rather than keep all of us up all night long. There's still a chance for the bobsledding. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wicklund. Andrea Birch with Scott Day on deck.
Yeah, my name is Andrea Birch. I am 728 Pascal Drive, Lafayette, Colorado, 80026. I am here tonight as the chief nursing officer from Lutheran Medical Center, and I really just want to say thank you to the community, because I have spent 10 years serving thousands of you, and it has been my deepest privilege. And on that note, this will seem very weird to those of you who know me, but I will decline to comment.
Thank you. Scott Day with Tom Rip on deck.
I believe I have the easiest name this evening. My name is Scott Day, D-A-Y. I live at 1522 Cherry Street, Denver, Colorado, 80220. I'm proud to have worked at Lutheran for 21 years as the vice president of Human Resources, as well as at St. Joseph Hospital downtown. I'm going to decline to speak at this time to hear the future plan.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Tom Rip. And Cynthia Bachelder is on deck.
Good evening, Thomas Rip. Forgive the laryngitis. R-I-T-P, as in Paul, 11942, West 56th Circle, Arvada, Colorado. And I've worked for 35 years at 4315 Wadsworth here in Wheat Ridge. I will hold my comments until the next hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Rip.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Bachelder and Shelley Thompson on deck.
Hello, my name is Cynthia Bachelder. It's B-A-T-C-H-E-L-D-E-R. I live at 25724 Bristol Cone Court in Golden, Colorado. And I also respect the council and thank you for the opportunity, but we'll wait till March 26.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Shelley Thompson, and Frida Micklin is on deck.
Good evening, my name is Shelley Thompson. My last name is spelled T-H-O-M-P-S-O-N. I live at 7025 South Penrose Court, Centennial, Colorado. I'm here this evening representing the leadership team at St. Anthony Hospital, our honorary, honorable competitor hospital. And most specifically, I'm here representing my boss, the chief executive officer at St. Anthony Hospital, Eddie Sim. I am the chief partnerships officer, and I've come here tonight just to say that we stand with Lutheran. We would oppose this idea of having another hospital added to the community, no matter who was trying to put another hospital in the company. I want to be clear, this is not about which company is trying to enter into Wheat Ridge. As Grant has already pointed out, the community already has 100 more hospital beds than are needed. Growth in the area is not expected to require more than 20 more when population growth is taken into account. And this is according to the Colorado Hospital Association. And this is according to the Colorado Hospital Association. St. Anthony Hospital, Level 1 Trauma Center. We are located six miles away from Lutheran Medical Center. And Lutheran Medical Center is a gem and a remarkable community hospital. The community is truly fortunate. Between St. Anthony Hospital and Lutheran Medical Center, we believe, we believe we can show that all necessary healthcare services are indeed covered. The introduction of a new hospital will jeopardize whether St. Anthony and Lutheran will be able to provide their existing comprehensive services to the community. We are also concerned that a new hospital would have difficulty staffing. The country is facing a tremendous shortage, in particular of nursing staff. A new hospital would not be a source of new employment. In fact, given the shortage of nurses across the nation and in the city of Denver, a new facility would simply shift employment of these resources from Lutheran or other local hospitals to the new facility. And I will tell you, at Centura, we have seen University Health enter a community in Longmont. I would encourage anyone who wants to see the likely outcome of the situation to take a look at what has happened there. All of these things have come to fruition. We know what we're talking about, and we stand with Lutheran. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Frida Micklin and Andy Castro on deck.
Good evening, my name is Frida Micklin. I live at 5415 South Grape Lane in Greenwood Village, Colorado, a little ways down the road. I come to this conversation from a slightly different approach. I'm not an expert in healthcare, but I know a little bit about rezoning. And my concern here is one of transparency. From the beginning, it seems like there was never anything in the documents, and there certainly wasn't anything at the neighborhood, original neighborhood meeting, about a hospital being planned. The term in the documents always says "employment use." I don't know what "employment use" means. I don't think anybody knows what "employment use" means. It means a place where people work. So the thing that I think is important, and I, you know, don't ascribe any lack of candor to the developer. I'm certain that they have all fine and good and honest intentions, but I think it's important through this process that everybody keeps their eye on the ball and keeps, is aware that the zoning that is being requested here does permit a hospital to be built in Planning Area 1 of this property. So I think we know, based on the history of this project, that it didn't start out intending to include a hospital. It was supposed to be Super Walmart, that didn't work out. Hospital came in later. It's just important, and I do think that the, you know, developer will use all candor and honesty, but folks just need to keep their eye on the ball and realize that the zoning does allow for it should other plans fall through. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Andy Castro up next, and Tim Knox on deck.
Andy Castro, C-A-S-T-R-O, 15478 Mountain View Circle, Broomfield, Colorado. Mayor Starke, members of the community, members of the City Council, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I'd like to respect the process of tonight and defer my comments till the postponed meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim Knox speaking, and I'm going to miss this big time, Stephen, I'm going to say Brownsond on deck.
Good evening, my name is Tim Knox. It's N-O-C-K. I live at 3365 West 114th Place in Westminster, Colorado. I've been caring for the community, volunteering for 27 years here in Wheat Ridge, and I'd like to hold my comment until we hear what the future plan is involved.
Thank you very much. Stephen, I'm going to have you give your own last name, so I don't do anything more to it. And Glenn Most on deck.
Dr. Steve Brown, B-R-O-W-N.
I guess it was the M.D. at the end of it that got me.
I think that's right. It's a legitimate mistake.
You're writing like a physician then.
I've been at Lutheran for 32 years. I served as a radiologist for 30 of those years, and now I'm the Chief Medical Officer. And obviously, I have a great love for Lutheran Medical Center. In light of the changes though, I think I also will defer my comments until the future hearing.
Thank you very much, Dr. Brown. Glenn Most speaking, and Anna Marie Parrish on deck.
Thank you, Glenn Most, M-O-S-T, 9210 East Berry Avenue in Greenwood Village. As a clinical psychologist and Executive Director of West Pines Behavioral Health, I've worked at Lutheran for 19 years, very proud to represent Lutheran. And as long as we're out of order, and as a clinical psychologist, I would like to go on the record as opposing conversion therapy as well. So, and as far as the motion goes, I'd like to decline my comments till next month.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Anna Marie Parrish and Cheryl Hosterman on deck.
Anna Marie Parrish, P-A-R-R-I-S-H, 2909 Mather Street, Brighton, Colorado, 80601. I've worked at Lutheran for 11 years, and I have a lot of respect for the family I work with, and I will defer my comments till later time.
Thank you very much. Cheryl Hosterman speaking, and Karen White on deck. Cheryl Hosterman, perhaps is left the room? Okay, we'll move to Karen White speaking, and Colleen Hatton on deck.
Good evening, I'm Karen White, W-H-I-T-E, like the color. And I'm coming to you this evening as a hospice and palliative care nurse. I work in the Collier Center. My address is 401 Interlocken Boulevard, I-N-T-E-R-L-O-C-K-E-N Boulevard, and that is up in Broomfield, 80021. Again, I'm a hospice and palliative care nurse, and I appreciate all the comments from this evening, and I too will hold my comments.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Colleen Hatton, H-A-T-T-O-N. I live at 15156 West Harvard Circle in Lakewood, Colorado. And I worked at Lutheran for 40.5 years. I beat everybody here, and I'll hold my comments.
Thank you so much. Karen Masters, I hope it is, speaking, and Mary McNellis on deck.
Hello, everyone, I'm Karen Masters, 8405 South Estes Street, Littleton, 80128. I stand here as a nurse, emergency department nurse, for over 20 years at Lutheran. I think you'll find that there's a reason that we come here and we stay here. It is our community within the hospital, and it is our community outside of the hospital. So from my heart to yours, I appreciate the process that's in place right here. I will defer my comments for now, but you remember that Lutheran loves you.
Thank you so much. Mary McNellis, and I hope I have this right, Winshold, Mr. and Mrs. Winshold on deck.
Good evening, my name is Mary McNellis. I'm the one with the Irish accent. I've actually lived here for 17 years. I am a resident of Wheat Ridge, and I've worked in many different roles in Lutheran on and off over the past 10 years. Out of respect for our CEO and our CNO, I have chosen to defer my comments, but I do appreciate the opportunity. Many thanks, God bless.
Thank you so much. Jacqueline Winhold, I'm sorry, at 6192 Dunraven Road in Golden. I'm sorry if I'm getting your name all out of whack. Sarah Minett is up, and Christine Yant on deck. Sarah Minett going once, okay. Christine Yant. Christine Yant going once, okay. Brian Hans, oh, sorry.
Max Stitch, S-T-I-C-H, but that was probably my penmanship. 1016th Denver, Colorado, 80218, and I'll defer.
Thank you so much. Brian Hanson and Sue McKellips on deck.
Hi, my name is Brian Hanson, 2750 Eldridge Street, Golden, Colorado, 80401. Hanson is H-A-N-S-E-N. I'll withhold my comments until we get further information for the next hearing.
Thank you very much. Sue McKellips and Marjorie Lance on deck.
Good evening, my name is Sue McKellips, M-C-K-E-L-L-I-P-S. I'm at 6481 Oak Street, that's Arvada, 8004, and I'm going to defer my comments for tonight.
Thank you very much. Marjorie Lance and Kathy Crabtree on deck.
Hello, I'm Marjorie Lance, 129 by 3 Leyden Street, Thornton, Colorado, 80602. Oh, sorry. Do I, I don't need to do that again, do I?
No.
Okay, good. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, but I will defer my comments until the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Kathy Crabtree and Jason Cardona on deck.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Crab, Kathy Crabtree, C-R-A-B-T-R-E-E, 4127 South Sheridan Boulevard, Denver, Colorado, 80235. Thank you for the opportunity to speak, but I'll defer my comments.
Thank you very much. Jason Cardona and, speaking, and Lee Richland on deck.
Good evening, my name is Jason Cardona, C-A-R-D-O-N-A, 9727 West Vantaventer Drive, Littleton, 80128. I've had the honor of being part of the Lutheran family for 17 years, and I'd like to thank the two previous speakers who were able to talk about the major positive impact that Lutherans had in their lives. I believe there was a premature baby, and one of them said that we were able to save their lives. So thank you for sharing your stories. And I will also defer my comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Lee Richland, it looks like, and then Andres at 6225 West 47th Avenue. And I'm sorry, I'm not even going to try your name, would be on deck. So Lee Richland. Bill Brown. Kim Calomino on deck.
Hello, my name is Barbara Kavanaugh. I live in the city of Wheat Ridge. I'm a registered nurse with 10 years of very fond connection to Lutheran Medical Center, and I will defer my comments until the 26th, but thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Kim Calomino.
Thank you.
Kathy, it looks like Train on deck, but I maybe have that out of place.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak, Kim Calomino, C-A-L-O-M-I-N-O, 4070 Dover Street. I think I'm perhaps the third of all the speakers tonight that actually lives in Wheat Ridge. I will await to see what the applicant brings forward. I want to state my appreciation for all the people who've shown up, but also I think we all should appreciate the very open process and communication we've had the benefit of from the applicant. I am distressed as the great deal of, once again, in our community, we've seen unattributed, misleading information distributed, polling done that, to me, sounds like a push poll, trying to instigate anxiety, scare tactics, misinformation, accusations. And as a community, it really distresses me when this happens in our midst. It's unnecessary. Let's get the facts, let's speak to each other honestly, and let's not rush to judgment with negative feedback. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another speaker, Katie, and I'm going to guess again, Iram, at 3901 North Raleigh Street. Sorry if I did things to your name that were not mentionable. That is all of the people that I have signed up. We have a lot of people here. Is there anyone that hasn't spoken that would like to come and speak? Yes, sir, please come to the microphone and give your name.
My name is Martin Chader, C-H-A-D-E-R. I live at 1945 Al Carter Street. I'm within the affected area here, so perhaps somewhat unique, although there are a few others. I wanted to make the point that the mitigation for a rather lightly traveled originally, 32nd Street exit from I-70, had been accommodated in the plans for the Capella development that since has been sidelined. I would certainly like that to be re-added into what is likely to be a traffic increase in here and more load on that particular exit. And I want to thank Councilman Harris for opening the discussion.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to come forward and speak on this issue at this time?
Craig Davis, I live at 13206 West 33rd Place, Golden, Colorado. It's about 50 feet south of where the planned development is. Pretty new, as you know, there's a lot of new people coming to Denver. I'm one of the new ones, I've been eight months old. So I don't know if I'll make it on March 26th, so I'll do my comments now, which is really, as I looked at the Wheat Ridge transcript, the news, I think it's the news in the Golden, I didn't see much in the last several months about the development. There may have been. Again, I'm new, and I don't know a lot of information. I would be interested to attend those meetings. You're managing partner, so it sounds like you work a lot of hours, and probably put it out there, I have no doubt. But again, I'm new, so I would like to attend that. I go to Wheat Ridge Rec Center four times a week, but generally, not during the hours of 8 to 5, like most people, I'm working. So I would like to attend. In fact, I'll take that, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there, are there any more speakers? Would anyone else like to come up and speak on this matter at this time? Got an open microphone. I don't see anyone, so Mr. Matthews?
I would like to thank everybody that came tonight, and I would like to thank the developer for his understanding that this isn't, you know, personal questions. It's not that we're saying he's a bad guy, and we're certainly behind him and his development efforts. And I hope you can forgive us for kind of being discombobulated in how we got around to this. But as a council, and as a councilman, I am really interested in allowing everyone to have their say. Someone else addressed that earlier tonight about how so few people are involved, and it just fills my heart with awe that so many people showed up today. Thank you.
Thank you. I would also like to express my thanks to all of the folks that came. We've had a lot of correspondence on this. I'd like to remind everyone that we have postponed the public hearing. The public hearing will occur on March 26, 2018, at 7 o'clock in this, in these chambers, and we will, as a city, publish notice of that. So come back, we're always glad to hear you. Appreciate you all coming. We're going to take about a 10-minute, or five-minute recess. Thank you. Okay, we're going to...
Benching Mr. Goff.
Facilities are currently authorized by conduct only. These activities that the state allows licensed facilities, state-licensed testing facilities to conduct, House Bill seventeen dash thirteen sixty-seven allows the new research and development licenses to conduct additional types of testing activities. On December eighteenth, 2017, the council discussed the possibilities of authorizing additional marijuana testing activities in the city and authorizing research-development licenses in the city. Consensus of council that evening was that no additional local licensing types are currently desired. Council expressed that it should consider permit city testing facilities, a license type already locally allowed, to conduct the full grant of testing activity authorized by state law, rather authorized under state law to testing licenses or to research and development licenses under the state's nomenclature. Council further directed that the draft ordinance make clear that any other activities authorized by state law to occur in research and development facilities, such as clinical trials, cultivation, or marijuana research projects. Projects remain prohibited in the city testing facilities.
Thank you. This is a hearing on first reading. A motion is in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill oh-four dash twenty-eighteen in ordinance, amending Section eleven dash twenty, two ninety-one and eleven dash four oh-one of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the authorized activities of marijuana testing facilities on first reading in order at published public hearing set for Monday, March twelfth, 2018, at seven o'clock PM in council, city council chambers, and that it take effect fifteen days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Davis and a second by Ms. Hoppe. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thank you.
Ms. Hoppe, you were the second?
Yes.
Second was Ms. Hoppe. Thank you. We'll move to item number four. Ms. Duran, would you please introduce this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to approve a contract in the amount not to exceed eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to Charles Abbott Associates, Inc., for ongoing building permit, plan review, and inspection services, and authorizing all subsequent payments.
Thank you. Do we have any, any further staff report on this?
Just a quick update from Ken Johnson. Yeah, we, we provided a very thorough update of, of this proposed new full-service Building Division Contract Services Model to council at your January twenty-second memo, so I'll maybe keep my remarks relatively brief and be open for questions. And Charles Abbott has representation here as, as well. You guys all asked a lot of good questions at the study session discussion, so appreciated your engagement in that regard. So, we are here tonight to, to approve a contract that would go to a, a really fully outsourced city Building Division functional model. As council is aware, and as we discussed further on the twenty-second, we've always had a contract inspection firm that's done a portion of the work, and for a variety of reasons, how much of that work and what type of that work they've done through that contract model has varied. It's varied based on what in-house skill sets we've had. It's varied based on work volume, and it's varied based on whether, whether or not we were fully staffed, and those all fluctuate quite a bit, and certainly fluctuated in one direction this year, as you're all well, as you all well know. In the first part of this year, we actually entered into contract with Charles Abbott effective, I believe, April seventeenth, but we went through an open bidding process, as we do periodically on this contract. It's typically a multi-year contract, as we're proposing with Charles Abbott, but we went, but then we periodically go out for a public bid. We did that this year. Charles Abbott was the consensus selection from the staff committee that reviewed those applications through our purchasing process. Very shortly thereafter, on, on May eighth, we had, of course, this significant hailstorm that, that really required us to rely very heavily on Charles Abbott with as many as four additional permit texts to process, primarily residential re-roof permits, and as many as six additional field inspectors to augment our limited staff to maintain all of our customer service expectations in terms of turnaround times for permits and conducting of next-day inspections. As council, I think, is aware, you can request an inspection up to midnight tonight and get an inspection the next day tomorrow. And that's an important service standard that we'll certainly continue to maintain, and that's, that amongst other performance standards, as was requested by council, are reflected in the contract terms as well, and actually will improve some of our customer service standards from what we're able to provide currently. We, we, I won't go on at length on this, but as, as you're maybe a little less aware, but we've, we've had challenges over the past several years in keeping fully staffed in the Building Division, and that really starts at the top. Chief building officials are a very small talent pool, and it's hard to attract them and retain them for a smaller community like Wheat Ridge. And lacking that leadership in the division, it becomes challenging to recruit and retain inspectors and permit techs as well. We think this, this new outsourcing service model will provide us with full-time staffing at all positions. Charles Abbott is a, is a mid-sized firm. They're based in California, but they have offices throughout the country. They were able to bring in resources during this storm event from as far away as Georgia and California and Nevada to meet our service needs. Moving forward, I think it'll be important that primarily the employees that'll be working for the city Wheat Ridge will be, on behalf of Charles Abbott, will be local Colorado folks, right? As we discussed back in January, starting with the fact that the three existing city staff employees, two permit techs, and one combination inspector, will all be offered and retained as employees by Charles Abbott, and really will be our starting point for staffing up, so there'll be that continuity from a customer service perspective. Additionally, several of the inspectors that have been working here are local, and they'll be recruiting to fill the additional spaces, so they're really, we, we do believe there'll be a nice amount of continuity in moving into this new model. So, we have negotiated a contract with CAA. They take, we went over this in more detail in January, but they take a percentage of the fees that are generated through the permit application process, so permit fees, plan review fees, contractor licensing fees. And for the first portion of that money, we pay sixty-eight percent back to them, so we still retain thirty-two percent of those, and that certainly will cover kind of some of the costs that we have with additional administrative oversight, managing the contract, and also the, of course, the planners conduct the zoning review on building permits, so that'll cover that cost. As the revenues go up on a monthly basis, that scale goes down, so between sixty and a hundred thousand dollars, it drops down to sixty percent, and above a hundred thousand dollars in revenues on a monthly basis, it goes down to fifty-five percent, based on some efficiencies they, they can achieve at those higher work volumes. So, we do think that it's an attractive pricing structure. We provided some budget analysis back in January as well, and think that on balance, it's, it's, it's pretty close to revenue-neutral when you factor in a variety of the different assumptions that you need to do, so that's, that's an important thing to consider as well. For 2018, we've proposed not to exceed amount of eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and that will be transferred from the budget that was approved by council later, late in 2017, which was, the total budget for the Building Division was closer to nine hundred thousand dollars, about eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. So, we have enough budget in there to cover expenses to date in terms of our staffing for January and February, and then the eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars is what we proposed as not to exceed for Charles Abbott for the balance of the year under this new model. Of course, revenues and expenses in the Building Division are variable. They're hard to predict. It's, it's not, we do our best, but it's not scientific. We certainly don't know what this second surge of residential re-roofs that we will see will be. We'd estimate it about two thousand. I think that'll be pretty close, but it's just hard to say, right? We know there's a number of people out there that haven't gotten their, their storm damage repaired, so we do believe that we'll still have a very busy year, but we, we feel pretty comfortable with that eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the time being. We haven't established a firm start yet, yet, but certainly we'd like to move quickly because we really have the team in place. It's just a question of making sure that we have a smooth transition with some of our internal functions, HR, purchasing, IT, and make sure that we get all those things in place before we officially pull the trigger. If contract, if the contract's approved this evening, we've got a, a meeting set up first thing tomorrow morning with sixteen people, believe it or not, to talk about that topic of what a, a smooth transition looks like, so we're ready to really jump on that fairly quickly. And Charles Abbott is here as well. I'm glad to answer questions, and they're here as well.
Okay. Let me just get this out of the way. There be, Mr. Goff, has anyone signed up to speak on this issue?
No, no. I checked. No one's signed up.
Okay. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this issue? Okay, we will close the public comment, and Mr. Matthews?
Just a quick comment...
Just a quick comment. I wish you all, you folks, work well with us and welcome to the family. I would encourage, though, Ken, that we do establish some form of metric measurement, not only for the nuts and bolts of the nails and roofs and everything that's going on, but also, one of the recurring themes I got when I was running and talking to folks was some dissatisfaction with our inspection procedures. And I would hope that we would kind of work with them to fill them in on those issues. And perhaps a year down the road or something, I realize there's going to be a break-in period. But keep an ear to the ground for customer satisfaction because this is the face of the city, if you will, you know, getting out and meeting a lot of people. I just want to make sure we keep good customer relations.
Ms. Duran, a motion would be in order.
Thank you. I move to approve a contract in the amount not to exceed $825,000 to Charles Abbott Associates, Inc., Broomfield, Colorado, for ongoing building permit, plan review and inspection services, and authorizing all subsequent payments.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hoppe, seconded by, or motion made by Ms. Duran, pardon me, seconded right away by Ms. Hoppe. Is there any discussion on the motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven to zero.
That concludes all of the agenda items. Our next order of business is city managers' matters. Mr. Dahl?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a quick update for, reminder for council and the public. The Colorado PUC is holding their scheduled hearing this Thursday. It could go into Friday, but this is on the hearing on both the A and the G lines of the commuter rail system. So hopefully, we get some good news and the PUC approves the train to move forward. The train is still in testing mode, and I haven't heard any negative results of the testing. But it's all up to the PUC at this point on Thursday and Friday. I'm sorry, yeah, this Thursday and Friday.
Thank you. City attorneys' matters?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Well, I want to say that you gave us yeoman advice tonight. So I appreciate your being here and helping us out with a few of these issues.
Happy to help.
Elected officials' matters, Ms. Duran?
Yes, I would like to circle back around. There were some citizens that spoke this evening regarding conversion therapy. I know I sent out an email to you and our city manager, Patrick Goff. So I would like to see if we can add that to a study session, so we can all discuss it.
I will instruct our mayor pro temp to get that.
I would support her on that, too.
Thank you.
Ms. Hoppe?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Urban?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Matthews?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to send a message home to all the folks that are watching on TV or will be watching in the future. I hope you noticed that we had a full room tonight. And I really was in awe of everyone that showed up. And I highly encourage you to come out and see us on a regular basis because one of the hardest things about this job is getting true citizen input. We see you when we campaign, and you come up with issues. But then, when we have district meetings, attendance across the board is very low. And I don't know, if we have to start bribing, you all, you know, with pizza or something. I really encourage everybody to come in and participate in local government because this is where we live. This is our home, our nest. And please, come out and let us know how we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Matthews. Ms. Dozeman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to piggyback on what Larry had said and give the public an opportunity to come out. Larry and I will be holding a district forum meeting on Tuesday, February 27th, at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center in Activity Room 2 at 6:30 PM. The topic of conversation will be the crime at the I-70 and Kipling Corridor. There's been a lot of chatter on social media about that area. And so we'd like to kind of clear the air, address some of citizen concerns, and get questions answered. So I invite you out to see us, thanks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Davis?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
Thank you. Well, I would like to also thank all of the citizens that came in tonight to speak. It's great to see everybody here. It was, you know, it's a little tough as a hearing officer, but hopefully, we didn't butcher too many names, and I appreciate all the patience that people have. I want to, again, reiterate that we've declared next week, February 19th through 25th, is Heart Healthy Week. I'm not sure that pizza's on that menu, but maybe there are some other good meals that you can avail yourself of and get heart healthy. You can join me on a walk on next Monday morning, which is a holiday. But I'll be there at, oh, what do we call it? Crown Hill, yes, in the south parking lot at 10:00. So if you'd like to take a little walk, I'll be there. And with that, I believe we are adjourned. Thanks for coming.